Sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four, meeting of the Smithfield Town Council Committees to order. Uh, the first is public comments. Do we have anyone in the audience that wishes to speak at public comments? I didn't see a sheet, but we're okay. Alrighty, thank you. Thank you, ma'am. The next is closed session. Is there any need for a closed session? No need for a closed session. Next is Public Safety Committee. Members Harris, Gibbs, and Brooks. Councilman Harris, the floor is yours, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Like to open the committee meeting. Chief Howe.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. And in the form of public safety, um, just to recap on a few things, on December the seventh, we held a field cop car, um, seeking assistance from the public for donations for Christian outreach. That was a huge success. We were able to obtain approximately twelve hundred dollars in cash donations and also, um, tons of food that was donated to Christian outreach. So, we really thank the community for supporting and assisting us in that endeavor. Um, as you know, on Saturday, we just had the Christmas parade. It was estimated to be approximately four to five hundred to five thousand patrons at the parade. To my knowledge, there has not been any issues concerning the reversal of the traffic on the bridge, um, and the delay as far as people trying to leave town was kept to a minimum as best we could. So, hopefully, we will not have any complaints, but we have not had, um, after action review of that. But thus far, we have not heard any complaints. You all should have received an invitation for the twenty-first, which is this Saturday, for our third annual awards banquet, which is required by our certified crime prevention, um, community status. That is one of the requirements, so hopefully, you all, if your schedules will allow, will be able to attend this Saturday at six-thirty at the Smithfield Center. In the last thing in the form of operational updates, the, as you all may be aware, that on Saturday evening, there was a shooting at Woods Edge Apartments or Rin Road, in which we've arrested, uh, two people thus far, and it's still an ongoing investigation. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that council may have in reference to operational updates or with our activity report that's been submitted in your packets.
Thank you, chief. Any questions or comments?
I do have a question. Um, the incident that occurred on Saturday and the previous incident, have we sent police reports to, um, TM Associates or whoever they're sent to?
Investigators went there this morning, so I am confident that they did, but I would follow, definitely follow up on that to, to make sure that they have a copy of the report.
Can you let me know about the other one, too?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. And before I let you go, uh, just a shout out to you and your fellows that took care of the parade.
Yes, sir.
Particularly to the folks of Wrong Gray Street. They really interacted well with the crowds and the children. We appreciate that a great deal.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
No other questions for chief? Our next report is, uh, Smithfield Volunteer Fire.
I don't see him here today, Mr. Chairman, at the rescue. Not coming. Thank you, chief.
Well, that brings us to the rescue folks.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. From Jeff's standpoint, he just wanted you to know they've been busy, and we've all been busy. The two markets in town went very well. We didn't have any instances at the mistletoe market. Uh, we did have one patient at the parade the other day before the parade started, uh, which worked out well. We were able to get them out and get them through the route, so there was no delay in care for the patient. Um, we were very busy the day of the mistletoe market in the rest of the county, um, but it didn't affect service, and we were able to get units where we needed to get them to. Saturday afternoon, in the midst of the shooting, the chief just referenced, uh, we had nine medic calls in a little more than fifty minutes in the county outside of the shooting incident. So, that's just how fast things change from nothing to all of it. There's only five staff medics in the county, so that, that's easy math, right? Um, we used Suffolk for a couple of calls and managed to handle the rest of them ourselves. Um, we're finishing up an EMT class in the next, um, month. We're doing a lot of community outreach to the high schools, uh, um, and looking forward to starting a new class in February, so that's really about all I have.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Uh, just one comment. I understand they've had elections at the rescue squad, and we are being fortunate to have, uh, Chief Carroll as our chief again for the next year, so we're really, I'm, I'm personally very happy about that, for sure. And, uh, I know y'all stayed busy.
Thank you all.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor.
The immediately following is the finance. Members, Mr. Pack, who's absent, Councilman Smith, and Vice Mayor Butler. Uh, who's going to chair that one?
I'd be glad to.
There you go. Councilman Smith? You got the floor.
Thank you, Ms. Bowman. Um, open up the, uh, finance committee and, uh, the November financial reports. Ms. Ross?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, you have your packet in front of you. Um, if we refer back to the second page in, it will show you overall revenue to expenses. Um, as you know, we billed the personal property taxes, and that was, we billed them on ten twenty-eight, and they were due on the fifth. We billed one point six million and some change, and, uh, to date, we have collected one million, three hundred and fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and eight, which leaves about three hundred and twelve thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five outstanding. We have made some adjustments to that. Um, total revenue collected, but this total revenue collected to date is at the end of November and does not include all the payments that came in at the beginning of December, which was when all the personal property was due. So, revenue collected to date is two million, eight hundred and forty-six thousand, which is twenty-five point three-six percent of what's budgeted, and this is to be expected. Uh, having known the amount that we're, we have collected for personal property in the month of December, that will bring us up to what we expect our revenue to be against expenses, and we should be balanced by that time. Um, let's see. Page, if we want to look on page, the second page, two to four, that will break down the general government revenue, and as you will note, out of that, the majority of the revenue to date comes from other local taxes, and that's one point two million dollars. Out of that, meals taxes, um, accounts for the majority of that, and that is seven hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. Uh, meals tax is higher, uh, this time of the year compared to last month at a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. Expenditures to date are four point three million dollars, and the footnotes detail all the expenditures and any changes that there might be with that. I've had, I have shared the financial statements with the department heads and asked them to see, to get back to me with any anomalies they might have, and I haven't heard anything back yet, but I'll continue to reach out to them next week. We'll talk briefly about the debt. Uh, the debt breakdown sheet is in your packet towards the back. Outstanding debt as at the end of November is four million dollars. Uh, we don't have any payments due for, on the series twenty-twenty A dash two and twenty-twenty A dash one until April, and we'll be banking the last payment on the V, back truck in August, and it'll be ninety-nine thousand dollars. We continue to bake the monthly payments on the twenty-two, twenty-two O-two dash B debt, and the outstanding amount on that is seven hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars. The prime rate has not changed since November the seventh, and there is a, let's see, we'll talk about cash balances unless anybody has any questions?
Just one, if I may. Mike? Who is it? Um, the departments, everybody running pretty much on schedule, nothing, no outliers or anything, 'cause, yeah, I know, you know, sometimes you spend a lot of money at the beginning, and then it kind of levels out, but everything's, everything's good?
Yeah. Everybody's running quite to budget.
Thank you.
It's really good. And if you look at your cash balances report, we were talking about that we've added some things to it. OPB means Old Point Bank, and TB means Town Bank, and we separated those funds out because we moved most of the funds from Town Bank over to Old Point Bank. And, um, like last month, we put some, um, we've separated out what we call the designated funds, which are not ones but use for general government activities. Those are at the bottom. Under, um, total bank balances, usable balances, and again, if we had to go and buy something really expensive and needed to spend some money, we could spend about eight million dollars on, on that. Um, let's see. There are this column right here that says pending and to slash from. How we come up with those balances? If you look in the financial statements online compared to what we have at the bank, there's a difference, and that's where that comes from. They're intercompany balances, we call it, to from, that go between the funds. Like, we write a check for Highway, and it would come out of the general fund, so we'd have, that's where the do from comes from, as an example. Any other questions on that?
But that ten thousand, four hundred, that's, that's, that's not an outlier at all, correct? That's just...
No, that's just...
Part of doing business?
Part of doing business. They don't watch us out. The auditors have us, um, do the adjusting entries at the end of the year, and they'll show what that is. Oh, forgot to bring up the, uh, the auditors. They said the financial statements will be due on the twentieth. They have to have it to the APA filed by the end of today, so there are a couple of things. I was sort of panicking if they would get that done, but they said they'll get it done, so I'll follow up and let you know if there are any problems.
Thank you.
All right, so the investments. Um, as you recall, we apportioned out the general fund, because we had them all stuck in one account together, but we've now put separate investment accounts for them. Um, one, we call market, money market utilities, utility developments, escrow, so those are the ones that actually can gain interest versus just sit in the bank account. We might move some money again to make sure we get the most for that. Um, general fund interest right now is three hundred and sixty-three thousand, that's year to date. Um, sewer, seventy-seven thousand, eight eighty-seven, and water, nine, that hundred and four, nine hundred and four, nine thousand, four hundred dollars, it's hard to say. And these numbers are cumulative. On the sheet, the numbers are all combined, um, which includes the VIP. If you look at my investment sheet, there's an investment benchmark sheet with your packet that says, um, cash balances, and that'll sort of show you where we are year to date. Overall, year-to-date interest earned in all the accounts, and that does include the, the money that we had for Luder, is five hundred and four thousand dollars. Um, the interest, total interest that we earned for the Luder funds was a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. That's all I have.
Any questions, Ms. Ross? Uh, moving right along, we have, uh, invoices over twenty thousand dollars, I'm trying to get back to that. Um, we have Athens Building Group, uh, for Little Sports Complex at one twenty-eight oh ninety-one seventy-one for the, uh, football concession building. B, we have Athens Buildings Corp. for, um, Windsor Castle Park Boardwalk Restoration Project at fifty-six nine sixty-five O-two. Any questions concerning that?
I have a related question, if I can.
Yes, go ahead, please.
Um, maybe Laura or Michael can tell me. What is the outstanding, uh, balance as far as SRA is concerned to the town of Smithfield to clear that debt, by chance, since we, how much have we spent as far as football facilities and things? I, my, my concern is, is equitable treatment, and, you know, I, I know how SRA has worked long and hard and paid their debt along the way. I just want to make sure we treat all the sports and all the folks equitably, and that's why I'm asking the questions.
Yes, sir.
I believe it was a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. I ran that total last week. Uh, it could be a hundred, uh, I do believe it's a hundred and thirty, but let me double check on that and get back to you.
Right. They just made their payment for this year.
And that was fifth?
They paid thirty thousand dollars on the debt each year, and then about twenty-five thousand dollars for rental of the facility.
Can I ask, uh...
Yes, sir.
When is that debt completely paid at thirty?
Uh, they have, I think the number was one twenty is what they had left, so they've got four more years.
Four more?
Yes, sir.
I think it was ten thirty.
You know, if I could...
Go ahead.
If I could, um, and I, we've got budget coming up, it was, won't be long, we'll be starting to, to look at that. Um, I've talked to a couple of members of SRA. Both of my children played there, had the benefit of the SRA. Um, I, I just, I feel very strongly that the interest that we accrued off of the contribution that we had comes very close to matching, um, the outstanding debt. And I would just like, maybe council and future council, as we, as we create the budget to consider, you know, the years and, and what, what SRA has done, um, and I'm sure Amy could weigh in or whatever, but, um, I, I just, I just feel like if we have the capability to work with them on relief of that debt in some way, shape, or form, or some type of consideration, I think would be the right thing to do. I'm looking at this, a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars for the, just the concession stand there. How many, would it, that, that'd cost us close to seven hundred thousand dollars, the concession stand?
Yes.
Six...
Six hundred and twenty...
I'm sorry?
Six hundred and twenty-four thousand in that ballpark.
Um, and we're talking about outstanding debt to get it off the back of SRA where they could use that, those funds that they continue to raise for the betterment and improvement of the field, 'cause I know how that field can get from time to time. I'm just throwing that out because I, I just want to make sure that, that, um, you know, we can do something that is fair and equitable across the board. Uh, and it's, that's not, in the grand scheme of things, a great deal of money, and it's money that we didn't have, that we have accrued over that, and I know, um, how, uh, significant ball fields are to, to this community, and I just think it might be the right thing to do to consider as we go down the path. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Can we have a discussion on that?
Can we? Yes.
Uh, question, Amy. The original debt was three hundred thousand dollars, and I think because of a draining issue or something that we, that was, uh, a problem out at Luder Sports Plex, uh, we re, actually reduced their debt.
No, ma'am. We haven't, though, they've always owed three hundred thousand. We didn't charge them their lease payment for, uh, twenty-twenty, 'cause they weren't able to use the fields.
We didn't charge a lease payment?
Right.
Okay. And that's twenty-five thousand?
Yes, ma'am. But they have made their payment each year of thirty thousand.
Okay. Um, I got a question, uh, Mayor Bowman. When you say fair and equitable, um, what do you feel that's not equitable about the current arrangement that we have there between, uh, it sounds like you have a question about the concession stands?
I have a question about the overall expenses. Concession stand really skews the, stood out, stands out as far as the amount of money that, uh, the town has utilized for that one facility, and I just, you know, whether it's baseball and football or, uh, different location facilities, it's, I, it just, it just rings true to me that we spent a lot of money on the concession stand, and I, I just really strongly believe that as far as SRA's concern and what they've done as well and working hard. The other thing is, I'd like to ask Amy, to your point, um, as far as providing funds back to the town for the utilization of the football field and whatever, is there an equitable division of how much SRA pays for the utilization of the baseball fields versus, uh, Smithfield, uh, the football group? Is, is everybody paying both the same amount, if you were to look at?
No, the lease payments are set up differently. SRA's is a fixed payment of twenty-five thousand. Um, football is a fee per flip, per player, um, and that's for both spring and fall season, 'cause they have flag in the spring.
Does it equal out, though, as far as...
No, sir, it doesn't. It was a payment that we came up with while meeting with football to see what they could afford to charge their players.
And again, I'm not, I'm not in any way demeaning football program. I love the football program. I think it's great. I just think that if we can give these folks a helping hand, both, as we have been doing...
Right.
And I know SRA has been working diligently to pay off that debt for how long now?
Uh, six years they've been paying on it, and they have four more payments. Um, I will say that them keeping Beal Park, which I didn't agree with initially 'cause I didn't understand it, has enabled them to grow their program for all of the children in the community. So, by no longer, by relieving their debt, they could put that money back into Beal Park, which it really needs. Their fields are not the level of Luder Sports.
That's, that's, that's all my point. I'm not, I'm not saying that, oh, the one, one group is getting more than the other. Where I, I just, I want everybody to have the best possible sports program they possibly can. That's, that's where I'm coming from. And if we could, and if we can help them along with some money that we have come across that was not in the budget and not otherwise, where we're basically assisting our recreational programs, and whether it's recreation, or whether it's Habitat for Humanity, or whatever it is, it's those things that make a community greater and, and more meanable and friendlier to the people. That's, that's where I'm coming from, and that's all.
SRA has some representatives have contacted me about trying to do something, some kind of workout thing, like you said, whether it be lower the payment, do away with the payment, do something. They feel like they've really worked hard, and I know they have. A lot of time they've spent, um, volunteer dinners and so forth for raising money, um, it's, um, and like you said, I, I never would have thought that it would have grown if they could have kept Beal Park, but it's actually grown even more by keeping that, and you're right.
And to, and to that point, if we didn't have Beal Park...
They couldn't have.
We're already, wait, wait a minute. We're already turning folks away, correct?
We're getting ready, they're getting ready to hit a threshold where they can't accept any more kids.
So, again, that's, that's all I'm, there's no hidden agenda, nothing. It's just, I want to do whatever we possibly can to improve our recreational programs. That's all.
Mr. Smith, may I add?
Yes.
I'd like to, uh, endorse Mr. Bowman's idea one hundred percent. Been very involved with SRA forever. I'm just trying to think, oh, my son was. And those folks, you know, they take the shovel and rake out there, and for years and years and years have done a tremendous amount just to, just to stay even, and now that they've recovered Beal, anything that we can do to take that off of them, I would be in favor of.
So, that, and I'm not, I'm not asking for a motion vote or anything, 'cause I still can't make a motion, at least for the month. So, um, but, but I just wanted to bring that up for us to maybe consider, because, as I said, I just, I just think it would do something to help all involved across the board.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Uh, I'm gonna, I've got a real basic question. What was the original three hundred thousand dollars for?
So, the original plan was, once Luder Sports was completed, they would sell Beal Park, and it would be whoever bought it, of course, returning it to whatever, likely wouldn't be baseball fields. So, they came to us in the last minute and said, hey, we, we need to keep Beal, so what can we do? And so, we all came together and changed it to a debt service payment, which the council at that time agreed on.
Got it.
Of three hundred thousand dollars, which was roughly what they estimated they would get for Beal.
And to be clear, they were going to contribute the funds from the sale of Beal Park...
Right.
...to the construction, so it was their financial contribution to the construction of Luder Sports Complex.
Got it. Thank you.
And their lease payment, of course, would continue past this debt service, whether it's relieved or not, so that would still remain.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
One more thing. Speaking of money that you weren't counting on, I've got sixty-eight thousand dollars because the town closed on Dr., the piece sold to Dr. Cook last week...
Yes.
And then lots to, um, Mr. Live and Dead, so that's fine money.
Yeah, I think we can look at that and see where we go to, uh, unlike the mayor says, is, we don't need to make a decision today, but we can start looking at it during budget season, and, uh, which is, budget's always tomorrow, so...
Yeah, and to, and to, and to that point, then, well, we can have the public hearing. The public can weigh in on it as well.
Yeah.
Make the case, don't make the case, whatever. I just, just wanted to get that out there to begin with. Thank you, Mr. Reddick.
Yeah. Any other discussion?
I'm feeling some kind of way about it, uh, Mike.
We got, we got time to work on, so, you know, I understand what you're saying, and I, and I want to make sure everybody understands where we're gonna go and where we're gonna go.
And I don't know if I'll be in a position to, um, vote one way or another on that. Um, this is a commitment that they made upfront, and, uh, I don't want to minimize, uh, the role that SRA plays in the community with our kids. Um, I can vividly remember, you know, looking at the project itself, we probably could have made, uh, saved some funding instead of just building one concession stand initially. You know, why not build, uh, a larger concession stand in between the two baseball fields? I mean, that's water under the dam now. Uh, I can remember the first weekend when it was open, and because of the drainage problem, the town took it upon itself to order, uh, porta-potties and portable wash basins. That was my first visit out to, uh, S, uh, Luder Sports Plex, and I guess it's more of a perception because the baseball, the football team has felt like they were stepchildren. They were not, uh, they had a, opening that same weekend, um, uh, Amy allowed them to have their first game the same time as the baseball field. However, knowing that they were two entities that were playing at Luder Sports Plex, we did not order porta-potties for the baseball team or the portable wash basins. We told them that they had to order theirs, their own. So, there is a, it appears to be a bias, and it may not be, but, you know, I, I don't want us to get into, uh, citizens or organizations making commitments to us, and then we decide to forego the debt that they owe us. And that's my personal feelings on that.
Vice Mayor, may I, um, speak to the history? Um, when we were building Luder Sports, we knew SRA was committed to the project. We didn't have any user groups for the football field. I called...
We did, we did, I'm sorry, we didn't have...
We did not have any other groups committed to use what was then the multipurpose field. Um, Derek Boone called me close to the opening day and said they were no longer able to use Hollow White Academy. So, they said, can we use that football field? So, we didn't know if there was any other user groups out there. The previous president of what was then, um, Pop Warner, said they had no intentions of using anything other than Hollow White Academy. And of course, with the new president, that changed, and Derek Boone asked to come out there. So, we didn't know we had another user group waiting in the wings to use that facility. That's why the differences are what they are.
And to add to that, Madam Vice Mayor, um, when I first became mayor, uh, we had the football group come and ask to meet. The football group's chief complaint was, they had asked council a number of times to meet with them to, uh, address their concerns, and they had had a little difficult time, and I told Amy immediately, arrange a meeting with them, and I'll talk with them. And that was the nexus that arrived or that allowed that concession stand to get moving along, was my meeting with them to bring it to y'all. So, I can assure you, there is no, no differentiation as far as the football team versus us. Is that correct?
Right. That is right.
I'm just saying, okay, we've met, I think we've met, we didn't meet with Derek before Mayor Bowman. There was conversation with the football team...
There was.
Before Mayor Bowman.
Yeah.
Well, the concession stand, it, well, the town had committed to doing one. I think the opera funds allowed it to happen a whole lot sooner. Now, I, I'm okay with moving forward, but at this point, you know, I won't be able to vote on the recommendation that you're making.
Teach us.
Woo! Are you okay?
That's one, I tricked the chair for you, son.
That's normally Bill Reddick's chair I bat.
I, uh, this does need discussion, further discussion. I don't think we need to, you know, air it all out tonight, but, uh, I do, would like to consider moving forward and looking at everybody across the board, not just the SRA, but...
Sure.
...the football people also, and what their needs are. And I think we've, Amy's done a great job of working with them.
Oh, she has, yeah.
She really has.
I don't push him back.
And a lot of praise in both, both sides, football and baseball. So, I really see, uh, a positive thing that's happened out there, and it will continue.
I think we've got a, I think we've got a great relationship with both of them.
Yes, I do.
That, that's what I want to continue to foster.
Mm-hmm. And I think that's, that's gonna continue to, continue to be, uh...
And we, uh, we're moving on a master plan. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Uh, we're working on a master plan, and we just met with the two rec leagues and... We're working on a master plan and we just met with the two rec leagues and so they were very positive and optimistic about the amenities that we're proposing out there. So we'll bring that to y'all soon, the next month or two.
Very good. Any other questions, concerns? If not, I'll close.
I think, I think what we did, I kind of missed you, I think you're going to need to decide whether you want to advance those two invoices over.
Yes, you are, you're correct.
That's my fault for getting in the middle.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I'll move that to consideration on the A and B of number three at council meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next is Public Buildings and Welfare. Members Vice Mayor Butler as chair, Councilman Harris, and Vice Mayor.
The first thing on the Public Buildings and Welfare is the pre-public hearing discussion, special use permit two oh one Gumwood Drive.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon.
Thank you, Laura.
In November, the Planning Commission approved a site plan amendment for this property for approximately a thirty by thirty-two foot addition. At the same meeting, they did favorably recommend a special use permit for a waiver of parking and loading requirements. With the addition, the applicant would be required to have a minimum of thirty-six parking spaces. The applicant currently has twenty-seven existing spaces. Staff do recommend that approval is contingent on the applicant obtaining exonerating permit and fee payment. Thank you.
Any discussions or questions of Tammy?
I've got a question, please.
Okay, Mike.
When it says twenty, it's twenty-seven, you said?
Twenty-seven existing spaces.
That exist now. I counted twenty-three. Am I missing something somewhere? Are there four more in there that I didn't see, parking spaces?
So there's the double on the front and they also have the parking on the side.
I did see that when I, I thought I counted it again to make sure that twenty-seven was there and I thought they were going to be created, extra ones going to be created to make it twenty-seven. That's not the case, is it?
There is existing twenty-seven spaces. At the Planning Commission meeting, the applicant also indicated that there's a shared parking, a verbal shared parking agreement with CVS for the staff along the back row of the CVS parking lot that faces Gumwood Drive.
So does that part of the twenty-seven?
That is not.
Okay, do we have anything in writing, consider, the shared spaces?
No, the applicant indicated it's, it's been an ongoing verbal agreement. They have not had any issues with the CVS in regards to that. It's been going on for multiple years.
And I do know the staff does park there.
Yeah, I know they do. I've seen them park there. I just had a question about the twenty-seven. I just, maybe I'm miscounting something that I didn't see. Does anybody else see that or am I the only one that can't get above twenty-three?
There's twenty-three in the main lot and then if you add the additional ones along Vincent Crossing, that's how they get to the twenty-seven.
That's how they get to twenty-seven?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's where the doctors park.
Right, okay. All right, that clears it up. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
But the parking along Vincent Crossing is not their property, is it?
That portion is. That is off, off the, it's a lot of parking area off the side of the street. Right.
That is a private road.
Yep.
Okay.
That's a good point, too.
Any more discussion? If not, we'll move this along to Town Council for consideration. Number two is a pre-public hearing discussion, entrance corridor overlay and historic district guidelines.
Yes, thank you. You were provided with access to a file folder. It had the original second submitted draft along with the staff edits for both the historic district guidelines along with the entrance corridor overlay guidelines. We do expect a third draft incorporating those comments by December twentieth, at which point staff will review and provide any additional comments prior to the January public hearing on both documents.
So you said we'll have a third draft?
That is correct.
Okay.
Incorporating the comments that were provided to the consultants.
So it's basically to update the existing?
Yes.
I know I had a conversation with you today. My brain is kind of fried. Can you-
Too much coffee.
-let me know what the, any major changes from the existing?
So the existing guidelines, they were last updated in two thousand and five. The idea here was to really modernize them, include specific materials that the Planning Commission wanted to see and specific materials that the Planning Commission didn't want to see. We also wanted to streamline the application process, so if you'll notice, there's some flow charts in there and incorporate a lot more visual aspects of the document. We also wanted to include relevant pictures to show examples in town. A lot of the photos that were used in the previous guidelines were not photos of buildings or structures within the town limits.
Number three, subdivision agreement Mallory Point, Phase A, Section Two.
Yes, thank you. This is the subdivision agreement for Section Two of Phase A. The phase, the entire Phase A site plan has already been approved by Planning Commission and Town Council has already approved the subdivision agreement for Section One of Phase A. They are now ready to begin the construction and installation of the infrastructure for water and sewer along with the roadways. This subdivision agreement attaches to our bond and therefore we can pull the bond through this subdivision agreement. It agrees that the developer will install water, sewer, and roadway to our town design standards and if so, we will then accept the infrastructure. We will be required to bring a third subdivision agreement for Phase A, Section Three, once they reach that point.
Any questions? Well, I had some questions about it earlier today for me to understand, so I had a conversation with Tammy about that.
I'd like to make a comment on that if I could. Just, just for what it's worth, every time I've ever called Tammy and needed to get clarification or something like that, she's always been there and always given straight, and always been available. So I just, you know, every once in a while, somebody deserves a pat on the back because the good job they do and I think that Tammy is always there, Michael. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or discussion on the subdivision agreement for Mallory Point? If not, I'd like for Tammy and Michael for clarification. I told somebody, I tuned in to the Planning Commission meeting to hear Tom Pope, Randy Pack, and Charles Bryan, and I had some concerns about Tom Pope's comments at the beginning of their meeting. I think he spoke on three issues. But the concern that I had was the roundabout on Battery Park and Nike Park Road, especially after reading the article in the paper, because the statement that was made among us and maybe it was planning, to say that VDOT requested the change in the roundabout and that was not correct. So can you give an overview of what we're voting on, what we voted on? Because after hearing Tom Pope the other day, I questioned what I voted on. But after having a conversation with you, I'm okay with the way I voted. But can you and Michael explain what happened when Mallory Point initially submitted their package to us and how we got to the single lane roundabout?
So it was proffered as a two-lane roundabout. When they went into site engineering, construction, and design for this Phase Two, they went back and they noticed that the queuing, the actual analysis-
Who's they?
I'm sorry, Mallory.
Their engineers.
Yes. When they went into site design, they realized that the, the actual analysis that took place was only for a single lane roundabout. It was not for a dual lane roundabout. It's my understanding at that point that they started conversations with VDOT and VDOT was in agreement that they were not meeting that twenty-five thousand threshold for that, for that two-lane roundabout, in addition to it already being modeled as a single lane roundabout. The amendment to the proffers, they still want to provide, they're still providing that right-of-way in case the two-lane roundabout is ever needed by additional development in the future. With that being said, the additional development in the future would be required to obtain a new traffic impact analysis, at which point that TIA could indicate that a dual-lane roundabout is not the best use of that intersection. They could be required to put back in a signalized light or something else. But the analysis for Mallory was only on a single-lane roundabout for their amount of traffic, including that slip lane when we come to Phase E and F.
Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you.
So that we're straight. The developer asked for the reduction from VDOT and VDOT agreed to that. VDOT did not ask for the reduction. And at the, and at the end of the day, we'll still have the same amount of land that we would have if it had been two-lane. We're just doing one lane at the instant moment because to do a two-lane at the present time, when you have one-lane feeders coming in, would cause a traffic safety issue. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And if a two-lane is needed, it won't be any expense to the town. It would be to the new developer if it's warranted.
Correct. If a new development came in and their TIA indicated a dual-lane roundabout at that location, that would be one of the things that we would look for them because that would be a result of their development.
Okay. Thanks, Tammy.
Just so you know, one other thing. We've been acquiring right-of-way for an additional lane on Battery Park for years and years and years. In connection with a bike path trail, we've, all those property owners had to dedicate right-of-way to the town and every development along there had to dedicate right-of-way to the town. So we've been acquiring at no cost right-of-way for an eventual expansion because twenty-five years ago, we realized that one day that might happen. So we don't have, we won't, there may be some minor pieces that we would end up involved in condemnation, but most of that right-of-way has been acquired over the years.
When you say the bike path, but the county put the bike path in, but we acquired it.
But we acquired-
The right-of-way.
We did.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Riddick.
Any more discussion? If not, I will close Public Buildings and Welfare.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. I have nothing left on the agenda other than additional items not listed on committee, but will be on council's upcoming agenda and that is Mr. Bill Riddick's purview.
Do you mind us?
Yeah. So we'll get, anything else to come before committee today? If not, thank y'all very much. Everyone have a very, very Merry Christmas, happy holidays. Meeting adjourned.